Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the December 7th Planning Commission meeting. We are going to begin by saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. This meeting is being conducted consistent with Assembly Bill 361 and Government Code Section 54953, subsection E. The Planning Commission meeting includes teleconference participation by all members. We are conducting the meeting using the Zoom platform, streaming live on the city website, and broadcasting on Comcast Channel 15, as well as via the city YouTube channel. Public members have the opportunity to submit emails to city staff. A report of all written comments was distributed to Planning Commission members via email and posted to the city's website under Documents Received After Published Agenda. Ms. Pottas, will you please call roll?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Stevens?
Present.
Commissioner Goodbody?
Present.
Commissioner Shay Franco-Clausen?
Absent.
Commissioner Patterson?
Present.
Commissioner Garg?
Absent.
Chair Ali Sullivan?
Absent.
Vice Chair Lo?
Here. Now, we will move to public comments. Public comments section provides an opportunity to address the Planning Commission on items not listed on the agenda. The Planning Commission welcomes comments and requests that speakers present their remarks in a respectful manner. Speakers wishing to address the Planning Commission should limit their comments to three minutes. I will ask Ms. Pottas to moderate the public comment portion of the meeting. At the end of public comment, we will address any questions that come up. Ms. Pottas?
Thank you, Vice Chair Lo. We don't have no attendees online. Does anybody in the audience wish to speak? Okay.
Public comment is closed at this time. The first item on the agenda. For agenda item number one, the Planning Commission may make a recommendation to the City Council. Item number one is PH 23-046, Proposed Demolition of Two Existing Detached Residences and Construction of a New 12-Unit Small-Lot Detached Residential Subdivision, Eden Village 3, on a 1.45-acre site located at 24764 and 24656 Moore Drive. Assessors' parcel numbers APNs 441-0074-009-00 and 441-0074-009-00, requiring approval of a zone change to Plan Development District, vesting tentative track map and approval of an environmental consistency checklist associated with application number MTA-23-0001. Applicant Jeffrey Lawrence Nuvera Homes. Owners Robert A. Pratt, FTRS Roberta Ann C. Wu, and Nagai M. Wang. May we hear from city staff on this item?
Yes. Good evening, Planning Commissioners and the Hayward community. I am Taylor Richard, an Associate Planner with the City of Hayward Planning Division. Tonight, we will be reviewing a vesting tentative track map, planned development rezoning, and SEQA consistency checklist for a new 12-unit small-lot detached residential subdivision referred to as Eden Village 3. Let's start with some background on the project. City Council approved Eden Village 1 in 2014 and Eden Village 2 in 2019. This project, Eden Village 3, is a continuation of those projects with the same development pattern just right across the street. Eden Village 1 and 2 are well-loved by the community and local businesses, as shown in the public comment letters received prior to this meeting. Furthermore, as part of the Hayward residential design study, we heard from lots of community members that small-lot detached residential subdivisions, like the one proposed, were very desirable. If this project seems familiar, it was because it was presented to the Planning Commission on October 12. The Planning Commission continued the item to allow the applicant to make some changes to the project. The Planning Commission had concerns about the security of the mailboxes in the JADUs, had a desire for more sustainability measures and unique architectural features, and requested or suggested reusing the removed trees on-site. I'm happy to say that Nuvera Homes, the applicant, revised their project in response to these comments. As a refresher, the 1.45-acre site is located along Moore Drive in the Mount Eden neighborhood in the northwestern area of Hayward. The project's site is zoned single-family residential and medium-density residential with a general plan land use designation of limited medium-density residential. The project is requesting to rezone to a Planned Development, or PD, district. As you can see on the map, there are several other PDs to the north, south, and east. The site is currently developed with two detached residential units that have deteriorated considerably due to vandalism, fire, and exposure to the elements. They were ultimately vacated in October of 2021 and September of 2022. The site has had an active code enforcement case on it since April of 2021 due to the nuisances associated with the site. Furthermore, there have been two encampments of unhoused individuals here. Nuvera Homes has committed to cleaning up the site if their project is approved. Their project includes the construction of 12 new detached residential units along a new private street. The development also features new landscape plantings along Moore Drive, in the front yards, and in the approximately 2,800-square-foot common open space area in the rear and along the northeastern side of the street. Based on commission's feedback, the applicant revised the architecture to include a greater variety of materials, colors, and roof lines. With these changes, all three elevations now have different roof lines, which create a unique architectural rhythm within the subdivision. These new architectural features are more modern but still maintain compatibility with Eden Village 1 and 2. As part of the project, the applicant is requesting deviations from lot standards, setbacks, and parking location requirements. These three exceptions are not only necessary to construct a small-lot subdivision, but similar exceptions were granted to Eden Village 1 and 2. It is important to note that some of these exceptions would not be needed under the new objective standards that the Planning Commission recently recommended City Council approve. To offset these exceptions, the applicant is proposing a total of 13 amenities. The amenities shown on the slide were presented at the last public hearing, so I will briefly cover them and their benefits. Then, I will spend some more time explaining the seven new amenities the applicant added based on the commissioner's feedback. The applicant is including a programmed common open space, a stone veneer plaster, a decorative street lighting to enhance the neighborhood aesthetics. These items will create consistencies with the previous Eden Villages. The project will include eight junior accessory dwelling units, also known as JADUs, which are affordable by design and create housing opportunities for college students, seniors, older children living with their guardian, and in-laws. Electric vehicle chargers will be installed in all the garages. Additional solar panels will be provided on the roofs to enhance the project's sustainability. Moving along, in response to commissioners' concerns, the mailbox was relocated from the frontage along Moore Drive to the common open space area near the rear of the project site. The new mailbox location will be in view of several residences, providing for more eyes on the street. It will also be on the end of a dead-end street rather than a thoroughfare, making it harder for it to be broken into unnoticed. Additionally, the clustered mailbox was upgraded to a higher-strength model made of heavy-duty aluminum with stainless steel hardware to further prevent break-ins. The applicant also enhanced the security of the JADUs by providing a solid-core door with a double-locking hotel-style deadbolt system. This will allow the doorway to be locked either from the JADU or the primary residences. Hearing the commission's desire for greater sustainability, the applicant has committed to including two additional solar panels on each residence, which exceeds the CalGreen requirement by 15% to 20%. Previously, the applicant had proposed a system that exceeded CalGreen's requirements by 10%. The additional panels will further reduce the residency's dependency on the grid, reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and generate additional electricity to support the EVs, the heat pump water heaters, and the electrical appliances. The applicant will now be providing a second rain-water collection barrier to each residence. With the likely increased frequency of storm events and periods of drought due to climate change, an additional collection barrel will be beneficial to supporting the landscaping, regardless of the weather. Last four amenities were based on commission's suggestion to reuse the lumber from the trees that are proposed to be removed. The applicant has coordinated with city staff to donate usable lumber to the La Vista Park Development, where it will be used as seating and other park features. For those who are not familiar with the La Vista Park Development, it is a 50-acre park that is a capital improvement project within the City of Hayward. The trees that are not selected for the La Vista Park Development will be used to create benches, picnic tables, planters, and a community art sign for the common open space area. Some examples of what those items may look like are shown on the screen. The leftover branches and leaves will be processed and used as mulch in the proposed landscaping. The reuse of these trees not only enhances the project's sustainability but creates a unique common open space area that celebrates the Mount Eden neighborhood's history. As you may remember, the centerpiece of that common open space area is a 77-inch diameter redwood tree. To ensure the tree has the best chance of survival, a rolled curb was added at the end of the street to further limit grading in and around the tree's strip line, and several boulders will be placed to protect the base of the tree. That concludes my description of the project. Now, I just want to highlight some of staff's analysis and project findings. The project? The proposed project is fully compliant with the City of Hayward's 2040 general plan, including several policies geared towards promoting infill residential development. Additionally, the development is within the prescribed density range. To recommend approval of a planned development rezoning, the following findings shown on the screen must be made. As noted on the previous slide, the project is fully compliant with the general plan and city policies. Our engineering staff has found that the street and utilities meet our standard details and will adequately serve the development. Given the site's existing condition and the success of the other Eden Village projects, the proposed development is desirable and will not have an adverse impact on the neighborhood. If anything, it will likely improve the neighborhood by abating the existing site's nuisances. Lastly, the requested exceptions are adequately offset by the amenities which improve the project's appearance, sustainability, and security. In accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, the project was found to be consistent with the Hayward 2040 general plan environmental impact report, noting that it would not have any significant impacts on the environment that had not already been analyzed, or more significant than what had been analyzed or were not substantially mitigated by uniformly applicable development policies. With that, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission recommend City Council approve the proposed vesting tentative track map and planned development rezoning based on the draft findings in Attachment 3, and subject to the recommended conditions of approval in Attachment 4. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about the proposed development. I am joined by our engineers Mo and Said, and Carly from Rincon Consultants, project manager Jeff Lawrence, architect Jonathan Boryak, engineer Megan Alfernes, and marketer Paul Disment. James, Wang, and Archie are here from the applicant team. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richard. Is there any other presentation from the developer? Anyone else? Okay. I'll open it up for Commissioner questions. Commissioner Patterson?
Thank you, Vice Chair, and thank you to staff. And also, I just wanted to thank the developer for the changes that you made. I wasn't here at the prior meeting, but I did watch it, so I am aware of what happened there. So my questions are a few things that are related to the original plan, although I'm really happy with the changes. So my first question relates to the JADUs, and this directed probably more to staff. And so I saw that in the report, it says that they are not counted as separate dwellings. And so I just wondered how that works when we're talking about the parking and the parks and traffic impact fees, which go by bedroom, because it seems that those bedrooms aren't being counted.
That is correct. Junior ADUs don't count as bedrooms, but given the size of the houses already, they're already at the highest tier, because it goes like three-plus bedrooms. So they're already going to pay the highest park fee. So even if that was a bedroom instead of a JADU, the park fee would be the same. Same with the TIF. The TIF is based on, the traffic impact fee is just based on dwelling unit in total.
So for the ones that are three bedrooms now, though, because there's a different rate, a fee rate, it looks like for four bedrooms, so these wouldn't be considered four bedrooms? Because I think it's all the three-bedroom units that are getting the JADUs?
I would have to look at the fee schedule to know that. I was under the impression that the fee schedule is three-plus bedrooms, but I could be wrong.
In the staff report, it lists two different fee rates for three bedrooms and four bedrooms. It shows that there are going to be eight three-bedroom units at one rate and then four four-bedroom units at another. And I'm sorry I didn't submit this ahead of time, but it was a long report.
I can look for that to address your question. I don't know if you had any follow-up questions while we're doing that quick review.
Sure. So another question, and this may just be like a typo, I'm not really sure, but in Attachment 6, which is the SEQA report, there's the section that's the arborist report. And on Pages 5 and 7, there's references to 24765 Hasparian. And I was wondering if that's like something that was left over from a previous project or if that actually relates to this project?
I don't have that SEQA document in front of me, but I'm guessing it's just left over from a previous project.
Okay. My next question was about the, and this may be directed also to the developer, I'm not sure. So for Tree 38, which is the one in question, the 77-inch with the 77-inch trunk, right now in the arborist report, which it says is a preliminary report, it says the recommendation is to potentially preserve it, but it sounds very clear that we want to preserve it. So I was just wondering at what point that would be updated to preserve, just to ensure that that's going to happen?
Yeah. The proposal is to preserve the 77-inch redwood. It was their recommendation to like maybe preserve it, but the project has it, and based on the conditions of approval, the plans show the preservation in the landscape report of to preserve that 77-inch redwood. And the condition of approval is based on the plan set that they complete that. So it will be preserved.
Okay. Thank you. And finally, just one last question. As far as the rain-water collection barrels, which again, I appreciate the increase in those, I was just wondering, because it says they're going to be used to support the landscaping, and I just wondered if that water is also going to be what's used for all the trees that are being preserved? Or is there like a different system for watering those?
I'll default to the applicant on that one, if the rain-water collection will be used to irrigate the trees or if the trees have separate irrigation. Unfortunately, our landscape architect, Michelle Koo, couldn't be here tonight.
Commissioner Patterson, I can go ahead and respond. There is a four-bedroom-plus unit that is in the master fee schedule. And so if junior ADUs, if that bedroom can be applicable for the four-bedroom, we would apply that. Obviously, it's codified in the master fee schedule, so whether it's three or four-bedroom, the applicant would be required to pay whatever that impact fee per the master fee schedule and per the MUNICode.
Thank you. Was there any answer to the question about the trees?
Working now? Okay, good. So you're asking whether that water will go to, there will be trees in the backyards of these houses for most cases, and then, you know, the rear yard landscaping is really, that portion of it is done by the homeowners. But I would think that would, you know, is probably best use for it, you know?
So as far as the Tree 38 and any other tree that was preserved, but especially that one, since it's the one that'll have a plaque and all those things, like how will that one be cared for?
The front yard and any of the open space will all be watered through the association's common meter, so, and all maintained by an association doing the front yard, so.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Patterson. Are there any other questions by any commissioners? Commissioner Goodbody?
Thank you, Vice Chair. I wanted to first thank the staff for the follow-up and for listening to our concerns from the first time that we heard this item. I know that we don't often see the work that you do behind the scenes to work with the applicant, and I want to also commend the applicant for coming back to the table, to listening to our concerns, and really improving this project. I did have a chance to go out and walk along Wonderland Way, look at your previous development, and I did look at the actual site. So I think that this is a very value add to the community and to the community at large. I was very pleased to see the repurposing of some of the items, such as the donation to the La Vista Park and the repurposing of some of the branches. I think that as a whole, our role as planning commissioners is to really, while we're looking at one particular easement or one particular project, that we try to make decisions that benefit the whole of the community, and I think that this is a very good example of having achieved that. So I want to commend both the staff and the applicant for really coming together and making this work. My one question was about the JADUs, and I may have missed it in the report, but did the fire department have concerns about the solid core with the double lock? I'm trying to remember how we got to the double lock.
There was concerns, I think, from some of the commissioners last time about having like, they wouldn't feel comfortable renting it out, having a stranger being on the other side. So they add, the applicant listened to those concerns and added the double lock. That way, if they did rent it out, that individual could lock it. That way, the primary residents couldn't come in, or vice versa, the primary residents could lock it, so that person couldn't come into their house. The fire department doesn't review at this stage, they'll review at building for life and safety, but I've seen this done with other JADUs, so I don't imagine it will be an issue.
Okay. And then what was the rear door to the JADU? Was that a solid core? Was that a sliding door that was proposed? A glass?
The exterior, or the entrance to the JADU? I'm not entirely certain what kind of door it is. It will have to meet building code requirements for an exterior door, and so I believe it'll have to be like a solid-core door. That's normally what entry doors are.
Okay.
The building and fire division will look at that during its technical plan check.
Thank you.
Any other Commissioner questions? Okay, so I have a couple of questions. I know that the one major goal, of course, is to save as many trees as we possibly can, especially the redwood. Are there any consequences if the trees die?
As our Tree Preservation Ordinance states, that protected trees, if they die, they have to be replaced for like value and like size, because they're still protected. So even if they do not make it, those trees would have to be replaced with like size and like thing. So we're not going to lose a net tree of the ones we're protecting on site. I can speak to some of the rear redwoods that are along one of the sides. The applicant actually wanted to protect a lot more of those and keep them in place, but at the recommendation of our landscape architect to remove them and get that mitigation done, because it was likely that they were not going to survive, given the placement, and that residents would want to tear them down because they're right in the rear of their property, and it also would make the solar panels less effective by creating shade on these. So in some cases, while we do try to preserve the most amount of trees, sometimes the best option is to remove them and get the mitigation done at the project stage like this, rather than delaying it to a later point when the residents move in and they don't want that tree there, and then they have to mitigate it one by one.
Thank you. And how do you, if you have a 77-foot tree, how do you mitigate that if it dies? I don't, because you couldn't just put something that's the equivalent in there. How does that work?
I wish our landscape architect would hear. She probably would talk to it more. There are many ways to comply with the Tree Preservation Ordinance, so it might be that they would have to add several trees or do off-site mitigations by a donation to another community park or adjacent property.
Thank you so much, and thank you for your presentation. It was really good. As it relates to the rain barrel, what I read was that the second rain barrel would be only if the homeowner asked for the second rain barrel. And I wanted to know what was the thought process behind having them only get it if they asked for it, and what is put into place to make sure they even know they have that option?
I will give that one to the applicant. That is their proposal.
I think we would, you know, we'd have our salespeople offer, ask if they want it, and we'd include it. The only reason I'd put that there is that some people, you know, the yards aren't giant anyway, and that there's, you know, they want to put something, you know, from their landscaping and that kind of thing, you know? It's something we include with every house, and we think it's important, and I'm just saying we'll give them another one if they'll take it. So I don't want to force it on them or block a patio design or something like that, so.
Got it. I want to disclose that I, too, I met with Mr. Lawrence on Saturday morning, and we walked through both Eden Village 1 and 2, and we walked through the property that would be Eden Village 3. And we walked through with the homeowners' association president from Eden Village 1 and Phase 1 and 2. And so I want to thank staff and also Mr. Lawrence for bringing this back, these proposals back to us. I wanted to talk a little bit or ask you another question, though. When we were walking with the gentleman, I'm sorry, I forgot his name already, but when we were walking with the gentleman, I asked him, what did he think about his house? What things did he think needed to be improved in his house? And he said two things that were already addressed. He said the mailboxes were getting broken into, and he liked the idea of having the mailboxes for this development or this project pushed down at the end and being more secure because they were having trouble with that. He also talked about the overhang of the cars because the driveways were too short, and we definitely don't want that. And so I know the driveways have been lengthened for this project, which hopefully will prevent that. And I appreciate you addressing both of those issues. The third thing that he brought up was a lack of insulation within the houses themselves. And he said they're very noisy. If you're upstairs, you hear everything that happens downstairs. If you're downstairs, you hear everything that happens upstairs. Would you be open to adding insulation between the floors?
Well, certainly look at that. I think it was interesting, part of this comment that he mentioned, too, was they changed from carpet and put hardwood on the upstairs floors and then could hear it more from down below. And it's kind of hard to stop that. I think even floor insul, I mean, I, you know.
Well, I think one of the things that he said was...
I made a note to myself, honestly, you know, to take a look at that and see. I think one of the things he was talking about was insulation between the rooms in the house, too, which is not common at all. But probably something that would make sense in between, like the master bedroom maybe and the other. And that's one of the things I kind of made a note of.
Would you be open to insulation of either between rooms or between the floors or some sort of plan about insulation as a condition of approval?
No, I... Yes.
Thank you. And I don't have any other questions. Do any other commissioners have any questions they want to ask? The public is now invited to comment on the item. Please raise your hand if you wish to speak on the item. Ms. Potos, do we have anyone online who would like to speak? I don't see any hands.
We have no attendees, but we do have Bill Pratt. Oh. Oh, okay, yes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Oh, perfect. Yes.
Okay, super. Yeah, as you heard, my name is Bill Pratt. I also submitted written comments. I'm the son of Robert and Roberta Pratt, who are the owners of the 24764 Moore Drive property. And the parcel is being sold to Navara for this development project. My parents have been in the area. Sort of going to touch on some of the highlights of what was in my written comment, but just they've been in the area 42 and 1/2 years, owned this property for 18 and 1/2 years, so they know the area very well. I've been the principal contact with Jeff of Navara Homes and in the interface with the rest of the family since about November 2021, when we were first approached by Navara, having seen the work they've been doing across the street. And I just wanted to make comment that working with Jeff and Navara has been, you know, very easy. He's a good communicator and has been very helpful in resolving issues. We... And once the development across the street was completed, totally transformed, as you witnessed, it totally transformed that side of the street, you know, from a set, haphazard set of old worn country houses to a polished, clean, and comfortable family development. Quite an improvement. I think the faster we can get these kind of developments implemented in the area, the better Off Hayward will be. As unfortunately, we've seen the area degrade significantly in the last five to 10 years. And so there's many families living on the streets, which is more what we'd like to see. I... So I guess it's great that we have a company like Navara that's going out and doing this kind, these kind of smaller infill projects. And I, of course, we strongly recommend that we not only allow this one, but let Navara do as many as possible or other small builders like them. Because, like I've said, the area is degrading quickly. And the more open space we got, the more problems we have. And so I just wanted to strongly encourage City of Hayward to work closely with these people, you know, Navara and other small builders, to help the development as, you know, as quick as possible. So anyway, that's all I had to say. Thank you much for your time. I appreciate all the hard work that the staff has done. The planning commission, thank you for having a special meeting. As well as Navara, thank you for their hard work in pushing this forward. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other public comments? Is that it?
No.
Okay, thank you so much. I would like to open it up for commissioner comments. Any commissioners have any comments?
If you could close the public meeting.
Oh, portion. I'm sorry, I will close the public portion and then open up to commissioner comments. Commissioner Patterson, do you have anything? No? Okay. Commissioner Stephen.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this vesting tentative map.
I'll second. Ms. Potos, would you please take... Oh, well, actually, were there any other comments? Any other comments? Okay, will you please take roll... I mean, vote. Just to clarify, that was Goodbody for the second.
Patterson.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodbody?
Yes.
Commissioner Franco Clausen, absent. Commissioner Patterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Garg, absent. Chair Ollie Sullivan, absent. Vice Chair Low. Yes, I do hope the developer will look into the insulation issue, though, as well. But yes. So the motion passes with four yeses. And we will move on to the second agenda item. For agenda item number two, the decision of the planning commission is final unless appealed. The appeal period is 10 days from the date of the decision. If appealed, a public hearing will be scheduled before the city council for final decision. PH 23-047, Proposal to Allow Sales of Beer at an Existing Billiards Hall Located at 895 B Street, Assessor Parcel Number 428-0071-050-00. In the DT-MS Downtown Main Street Zoning District, Requiring Approval of Conditional Use Permit, Application Number UP-23-0021, And Finding That the Action Is Exempt From Sequoia. Amy Wang of A&amp;A Billiards, Applicant/Operator, City of Hayward, Property Owner. And may we please have the presentation by city staff?
Give me one second.
Good evening, folks. Sorry I'm late. I was sitting right outside and I wasn't paying attention because I was texting somebody on my phone. Steve Kowalski, Associate Planner, here to present the use permit application from A&amp;A Billiards to sell beer to customers at their pool hall right up the street here at 895 B Street. Open up the slideshow presentation, please. Adam Kirk. Thank you. So this is a request for approval of a conditional use permit to allow the owners of A&amp;A Billiards at 895 B Street to sell beer to customers of legal drinking age. The applicants, Amy Wang and her husband Armando, have been operating the billiards hall at the subject location since late June of this year. Indoor recreation uses, such as billiards halls, are a permitted use in this part of the downtown. However, offering beer or any other type of alcohol for sale to patrons automatically results in the use being reclassified as a bar. And bars and other similar establishments that sell alcohol for onsite consumption require approval of a conditional use permit from the planning commission. The Billiards Hall occupies the commercial space at the southwest corner of the intersection of B Street and Mission Boulevard. You can see it in this aerial photo on the slide. It's located in the city-owned 855 B Street Parking Garage and Shops. The space, the tenant space, measures approximately 1,800 square feet and features six pool tables, a cashier's counter, where customers pay to rent the facilities and can purchase a variety of packaged snacks and soft drinks, a display refrigerator containing the drinks that are currently available for sale, two unisex restrooms, and a service area at the back of house. Parking for the business is available in the adjacent public parking garage and along the adjacent public streets and nearby municipal parking lots along A Street, B Street, and Mission Boulevard. The establishment is generally open currently from about midday to 10:00 PM or 11:00 PM on weekday nights, weekdays and nights, and to 1:00 AM on Fridays and Saturdays. The only change to the business operations being proposed by the owners is to offer a variety of bottled and canned beers available for purchase to customers of legal drinking age under what's called a Type 40 Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control license. A Type 40 license allows an establishment to sell beer only, not wine or spirits, but requires prepackaged foods, such as snacks and sandwiches, to be available for purchase at all times when beer is sold. It also allows for minors to be on the premises, incidentally. So it's not considered a bar that's only... Where no minors are allowed while adults are drinking beer. This slide just shows the floor plan for the audience watching at home. The two front doors that open up to the B Street sidewalk are over here on the left. Here is your six pool tables. The cashier's counter is over here, right when you walk in in the left-hand corner of the space. And then the bathrooms and the service corridor and storage room are in the back there. The police department has reviewed the application and prescribed a number of conditions of approval designed to prohibit underage drinking and truancy, ensure the safety of the establishment's patrons, employees, and neighboring businesses, and minimize overall impacts to the city's police resources. This slide lists requirements that the applicant must adhere to if the CUP is approved. These include requirements to have one licensed security guard monitor the premises every Friday and Saturday night, utilize digital, the handheld digital age verification scanners to ensure that minors do not try to purchase beer, and school-age youth do not enter the establishment during schooltime hours, and have all employees who sell beer complete a responsible beverage service certification program, limit beer purchases to no more than two at a time per customer, and install high-definition surveillance cameras at strategic locations throughout the premises and make the footage available to the police department in the event of an incident or an investigation. Allowing the business to sell beer to customers would be consistent with the vision of the city's downtown-specific plan, which calls for transforming the downtown into a lively, thriving destination, complete with shopping, dining, recreation, and entertainment options for people of all ages, in that it would offer a popular form of recreation that is often found in bars across the country and around the world, for that matter, which would be subject to various conditions aimed at ensuring the establishment operates in a safe and responsible and legal manner. Similarly, the proposed use would be consistent... Oops. Sorry, oops. The... I did the slides out of order there. The proposed use would be consistent with several policies of the land use and economic development, or community safety policies of the general plan that call for establishing the downtown as a vibrant mixed-use district, offering a variety of retail, commercial, and service uses, including nightlife and entertainment options, while also recognizing the importance of conditioning certain uses that could have a potential adverse impact on safety and police resources, such as bars and nightclubs and pool halls that sell alcohol. So staff has included a number of operational conditions in Attachment 3 to the staff report to ensure that the business does not adversely impact public safety or the adjacent land uses or overtax the city's police resources. Additionally, as stated before, the proposed use is consistent with many goals and policies contained in both the general plan and downtown-specific plan that call for transforming the downtown into a lively and successful shopping, dining, recreation, and entertainment district. For these reasons, staff believes that the commission can make the required findings in support of the proposal and is recommending that it approve the CUP, the conditional use permit, sorry, based on the draft findings in Attachment 2 and subject to the conditions of approval in Attachment 3. That concludes staff's presentation. Thank you. I should have mentioned, I apologize, we have Detective Gabrielle Wright from the police department, who was my contact throughout the application review process and who helped craft the conditions of approval from the police department, in case the commission has any questions for HPD.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kowalski, for your presentation. Are there any other presentations? Does the developer have a presentation or anything?
Yes, I believe Armando, the husband, would like to come up and address the planning mission. Yeah, Armando, just come down to the dais where the microphone is. It looks like it might be on already.
Good evening. My name is Armando Rera, and this is my wife, Amy Wang. I'm currently running the sport complex in Hayward for a nonprofit soccer field. And we, my wife and I, thought about, you know, retiring and put a pool hall. But we noticed that most of my patrons, they come and play for half an hour and then they say, okay, you know what? We're going to go over the bar and get a beer, and then we come back. And it's really, really expensive rent that we're paying right now. And it's barely coming out evenly. And it's very necessary for our business to survive, you know, to have a little bit of alcohol. And, you know, it's just me and my wife running. But if we get approved, then we hire other people and we hire a security guard to come and help us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have any commissioner questions? Commissioner Stephen?
I just was curious. Would a CUP in a city like Berkeley or Oakland be necessary for an establishment like this? Or is there something unique about Hayward?
You know, it's a good question. I think generally, most cities, when there's a bar involved... And this isn't a bar in the traditional sense where you pull up a stool and there's a whole variety of alcoholic beverages. But anytime you introduce, excluding restaurants, where I can go and have a dinner with my family and get a beer or a glass of wine or even a cocktail. When you have an establishment like a pool hall or, you know... I think when you introduce alcohol, I think it's pretty typical that most cities in the Bay Area will require a conditional use permit. Just in case... And that just gives the city the ability. If things start to go sideways, if the operator starts misbehaving and is not listening to city staff, it gives the city the ability to revoke in the worst-case scenario.
Any other questions, Commissioner Stevens? Hey, Commissioner Patterson?
I just had one question. It's probably for the owners. I'm just, I was just wondering what the capacity is for the billiard hall? Like, how many patrons could you have there at once?
Forty-eight, okay. Commissioner Goodbody.
Thank you. Add a question for the applicant as well. How... I understand that minors are going to be able to... To attend to play with the pool, the billiards as well. And with the introduction of the ability to sell beer, what is your plan to ensure that the... Those over 21 are not selling beer to the minors?
Okay, so our plan, thank you. So our plan is to check IDs for everyone that looks under 40 years old. And we also have, we're going to have a program. We're working on it with HARD, so that have the high school kids come from 1:00 PM to 6:00 PM, have tournaments for the high schools, so they can come and play with us. And then after 6:00 PM, we'll stop all underage and we'll allow, you know, everybody over 21 to come and play and enjoy and have a beer while they're playing. So that we noticed that it's very important that... So that, we noticed that it's very important that if they have a beer, their playing time will be one to two hours instead of half an hour and then get bored, and then they have to go to a bar to get a drink. We also serve snacks, sandwiches. We know drinking the beers is, you know, people get a little high, so we plan to sell a little bit of snacks.
Okay, and then you'll have regular non-alcoholic drinks available to those that are underage as well?
We have a big variety of drinks, ginger beers, sodas, Gatorades, juices, all kinds of drinks.
Okay, thank you. And my question was for the police department about why the security guard, the condition for the security guard only on Friday and Saturday nights and not during the week? I was just wondering how we got there.
Yeah, I'd, I'd prefer to have Detective Wright field that question. Can we patch her in on this? She's zooming in.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Okay, great. So generally speaking, since we looked at their business hours and since they were going to stay open later on Friday and Saturday evenings, and we understand that that may be a busier time, and that is why we recommended that a security guard be there just to verify, check IDs, just ensure that everyone who is inside there is over the age of 21, since it is an establishment that can serve, I guess, minors and adults can both be in there since it's not a Type 48 license, which is a regular bar.
I have a couple of questions. It said that no children would be allowed on the premises during school hours. Is that from September until May?
Yeah, the intent was there to, to, so that the establishment doesn't, what am I trying to say? Truancy doesn't occur within the establishment. So it would be during the school, the normal school year. We could probably tighten the language in that condition up a little bit, but that was the intent, just when school was in session, there should not be any school-aged children in the pool hall. They're supposed to be on campus in class, so.
Yeah, it just seemed like, yeah, I just thought the language could be tightened up a little bit there. And then also in another place, on condition number 23, when it said no more than two critical incidents within one year or else potential revocation permit, crime of violence or large unruly gathering requiring five or more officers. I was wondering, did the crime of violence require, was it the issue that five officers were involved, or was it the fact that crimes of violence were happening? I don't know, the way it was written was, I felt, could be tightened up as well.
Okay, so that one, I'll have Gabby, Detective Wright, address. As for the question about the truancy, the commission can certainly propose, suggest amendments to the language in that condition, and, and you can take a vote on that. But Detective, Detective Wright, would you mind? I'm not sure if you have the, the conditions of approval in front of you, but the chair is asking about condition number 23, which is the one that deals with the, the critical incidents, and if two-
So I don't have, hey Steve, so I don't have the, I don't have that in front of me, but I do know that when it comes to the critical incidents, this is actually something that's built into our alcohol ordinance in regards to a critical incident. And so it's if five or more officers respond to the location regarding any one of those serious crime types that are occurring, that we can establish a nexus to the bar. So let's say hypothetically, the, there's a burglary or robbery and five or more officers show up, and it's not having to do with some sort of assault where maybe there was over-serving or people fighting, we're, we're not going to establish that as a critical incident. It would have to more so be, hey, this, this establishment contributed maybe to this unruly gathering, assault, anything like that occurring.
Thank you very much for the clarification. I appreciate that. And when the applicant, when you were talking earlier, I wanted to just clarify, were you saying, can you come back up? Actually, I apologize making you come back, but I do appreciate it. Can you press that big button? Thank you. So when you were speaking earlier, it sounded like you were saying the children wouldn't, wouldn't, would be on the premises from 1 until 6, and then they'd be kicked out at 6? And so I'm just, I wanted a little bit more clarification about when children would be allowed into the establishment.
This will, this will be a school program thing, so there will always be a teacher around. So they do that so that the kids come and have tournaments for the kids, because they cannot do it after, after, after hours. So they'll have to get special permission from the school.
Okay, it's like a field trip.
It'd be like a field trip, yeah.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, it's not like every day they're going to come and play. No, it's only certain, certain times, they'll make it and they'll have a tournament for the kids, but only, only that day. And then they'll go back and whenever they have another field trip, they'll come and, and make appointment with me, and I can take care of the kids. I also forgot to mention, there's a lot of people that are very happy that we opened. They're literally going and give us tips without playing. They want us to stay in business. They begging us to stay in business, and we hope we stay in business with Hayward for a long, long time.
Okay. Thank you again. Any more commissioner questions? Want to open up for public comment? I'm going to close public comments, seeing that there are no public comments. And now I'd like to open up for commissioner comments. Any comments? Commissioner Patterson?
I just wanted to say, say that I think that this is really something that seems good for the city of Hayward, it's filling a void, especially, there was the closure of the other billiard hall that existed, and so I feel like there's been a, a gap there. And so I'm really happy that you are doing this, and I, I wish you success and hope that this helps, if this were to pass.
Commissioner Goodbody?
Yeah, I echo Commissioner Patterson's sentiments. I was very happy to see the activity on that corner, and I'm really pleased to see the partnership with the school district and really giving our students a dedicated time and a dedicated activity to do. I would also suggest maybe in the future, consider doing maybe clinics for those of us that have always tried to look cool, and like, we could play billiards, but we, we know the truth. That would be a, a nice value add as well. And I, I wish you success.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes, Chair, thank you. I'm totally in support of this. I think the only thing is we need to adjust condition 20, which is where it says to prevent truancy, school-age, high school, and younger patrons shall not be permitted on the premise during school hours. Could it say premise, on the premises when school's in session, or something along those lines? And then could it, I'm confused too, because if, if students that are younger than 21 are going to be there in the afternoon, wouldn't it have to say, or as approved by the school or authorized representative, or something along those lines?
It, it can say whatever the commission wants. I think the city, city staff didn't want to be too prescriptive. We just wanted to make sure that the operators knew that we, it wasn't going to be tolerated having high school-aged children who are clearly supposed to be in, you know, at noon or 1:00 in the afternoon when school is still in session, they're shooting pool. So how specific it, it gets is up, is really up to the-
I just, maybe I was confused, because I, I thought Hard was going to have a program where they were going to bring school-aged children in the afternoon before school let out? Did I misunderstand that? Was it like 1 to 6 or something along those lines? Or was it? I'm just saying, it seems like it would be in conflict if we didn't-
I, I think the applicants did mention that to me sometime in the past, but we, it didn't get into the staff report or into a condition of approval, because they weren't super clear about it with me. Again, we just want to make sure that minors aren't there after 10:00 PM at night, and that school-aged children, you know, all the way up to high school, aren't, aren't there when they're supposed to be in school.
Okay, so I'm totally good with it. I would make a motion to approve the item pending an adjustment to the language there.
One second.
I do have, I just need to think about this for a second, because I agree that we need to clean up the language. I don't, I thought it was not saying exactly what we want it to say. And I was thinking of something like, no children on the premises during school hours, or when school's in session, or during school hours without prior approval by the school, and also with adult supervision?
Yeah, unless at a sanctioned, school sanctioned event or something like that, maybe, perhaps?
Okay.
Or could, could we maybe just prescribe, clarify it by the hours? Could we maybe have language in there that says individuals under 18 are only allowed during, between 6 and 8:00 PM, or something like that?
Well, I think that's what we were saying, though. That would exclude the, if they had the Hard program, where they came in at, at different hours than whatever we've prescribed. So the hours, I think, are going to be, I think that might be a problem if they end up having these programs that they're talking about through Hard. Because we don't know when they're going to schedule those programs, so.
So do we have to actually mention when school is in session at all? Can we solve this by just saying minors need to be accompanied by adults, or there needs to be a sanction? The reason that I'm saying that is because that then, who is the onus on to know if it's a school day? Just because it's a weekday, it doesn't mean it's a school day. Or you could go to Hayward Public School where it is a school day, and over here at this other school that's nearby, it's a, a private school or something, you're off that day. So whose responsibility would that be? So I feel like the more detailed we get, actually, the harder it might be to enforce. So I'm just wondering if there's a way to just basically get to the point of what we're trying to say, which is that if, if students are, if children are there, or people who are minors, they either need to be accompanied by an adult, or it needs to be an approved, like, event.
So would, would staff be open to just a simple student, children, people under a certain age have to be accompanied by an adult?
We can, but I, and Detective Wright can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think if you're a high school senior and class is over and you and your buddies want to go shoot pool at 5:00 o'clock after school, they're, they're entitled to under this liquor license. It's not a bar where it says, you know, nobody under 21 allowed.
Got it.
So we wouldn't want to, we wouldn't want to, you know, prevent that, that age group from, from being able to go in and, and shoot some pool and help the applicant with, you know, make, make a little more, increase, increase business a little bit more for the applicant, you know? So the main, the main thrust of this condition is just to make sure that, again, there shouldn't be school-aged children there from high school on down, when they're supposed to be in high school on down. So-
So I understand the point, but I'm, how do you know that they're supposed to be there, is the question? So what if I'm a senior and actually don't have class all day?
Yeah.
So-
Yeah.
I'm telling the owner, I, I really don't have class. How do they know that?
Yeah.
So what is-
I understand. It's a, it's a good question. We, we didn't put this much thought into when, when we crafted the condition clearly. So I do like saying that unless it's a school sanctioned event, or like a Hard sanctioned event, I think that's probably important, an important caveat to put into the condition. But how the rest of it's crafted is, it would be great if the commission could, could-
Is there language for any other establishment in Hayward that's similar to this, that is to prevent truancy?
Hmm. Gabby, do you know the answer to that? Are you-
So this, so this language was taken from Chalk It Up. So they actually, I think they had a little bit more restrictive language. They're no longer in business, but that's where this one came from. And the, the sole purpose of it was to prevent truancy, and I understand that people go, or kids go to schools at various hours, some get out at noon, you know, it, it could very well, there's a big range. And so it is something where I think for the police department, it would more so be if we're finding that minors are there who are supposed to be in school, or we're getting a lot of complaints about this thing, I think that's kind of where the condition stemmed from.
One, if I can, if I can offer just an option, and if, if we expand the condition that's currently there to prevent truancy, school-age, high school, or younger patrons shall not be permitted on premises during school hours, you could add a comma without a prior, without a parent or guardian, or somebody, or sanction of a school sanctioned activity or something. I think that could probably tie up a little bit and more clarify. I think, I think what I'm hearing from the commission is a desire that there needs to be more guidance, but we don't want to get overly specific, because then it gets really difficult to monitor and control. So that could be an option if we just elaborate and clarify that one, that one sentence. I don't know how the commission feels about that, or if you're looking at something a little bit more specific.
I almost would like something less specific, unless there is a problem, which is why there's the, the permit, right? So I'm almost thinking something more like the owner will cooperate with Hayward Police regarding truancy, will keep records of students who are, or minors who are in attendance, like, something like that, that's where they're more just working with the city versus having to try to figure this out, because I could imagine that being difficult for them.
I agree with what, what you said. I think it's a very difficult thing to try to police school-aged children.
I just thought of something. What if we, so all schools are probably out by, what, 3? What if we said no minors prior, before 3:00 o'clock on a, on a weekday?
But we're still going to have the same issue as to, is summers or year-round school?
Yeah.
We're still going to have the same issues. I think that Commissioner Patterson is correct. It's, it's all about making it easier for the applicant to know what his response, his and her responsibilities are, and we want to make it easier for them. It sounds like the applicant wants to speak, but also Commissioner Goodbody wants to say something. So give us one second.
Yeah, I generally agree that it seems that I, I would prefer almost removing the references to school hours and schools in session, with the exception of school or, school events or school-sponsored or community events that involve minors. It seems that, you know, in this day where we have traditional school, year-round school, some students are homeschooled, so they don't have a campus that they go to. So it seems that removing the time, the hours that the minors can attend, that can enter the billiards, separating the school from that seems, I, I would prefer that.
And the applicant wanted to speak? Did you want to respond? Come on up.
Hello? Okay, so I can compromise myself by now allowing any, anybody under the 21 with our parents, because 50% of my customers right now are parents with kids. They go there and teach the kids how to play pool. But we make sure that the kids are always accompanied by a parent, or some, someone adult.
Would it decrease your, your revenue if the, for the scenario that Mr. Kowalski talked about earlier? In other words, you have a lot of 17-year-olds that are spending a lot of money there, and would, would a rule like that prevent you from making the money that you would normally make?
We could ask them for an ID if they're not under 20, if they're under 21, and with our, a guardian, a parent, then we wouldn't allow them in.
Armando, I, what the, the chairwoman is asking is, you're, you're allowed to have minors come and shoot pool without parents or legal guardians.
Okay.
And if you, if you agree to say what you just said, minors can only come to your billiards hall if they're accompanied by a parent or a legal guardian, I think what she's asking is, are you, are you comfortable with losing that, the business that you might otherwise get if you let minors come without parents or legal guardians? Do you understa, does that make sense? Do you understand, does that make sense?
Of course, of course, I'm compromising on that, because I'm going to get other patrons now, other patrons are going to start coming in, bringing more business. I won't be dependent on the kids now. Yeah, so we'll be okay.
Thank you. I see what you're saying now. I understand what you're saying. Go ahead, Commissioner Stevens.
But, I mean, I think it's a good thing for 17-year-olds or 16-year-olds to have a place to go and play pool, so I, I think that they should be able to be there without an adult. I mean, I, it's an activity, it's a, you know, it's something to do, right? So I don't know, I'm, I get the truancy thing, but it seems like that should be an issue that could be worked out. If there's really kids that are being truant, wouldn't that be just, wouldn't we just know that's an issue?
I'm at a loss. I want, I want the commission to tell us how they, you guys want that condition worded. Unless Gab, unless Detective Wright has a specific concern that she wants to make sure is addressed, we just, you know, I've said it before, we just don't want...
And that is my concern. Detective Wright, can you answer that question about, do you have specific concerns about this specific business or these specific types of business that businesses that make you require this condition?
So generally, when we've approved previous businesses like this that are open to kids as well as adults, that there could be the tendency for truancy, and we don't know if this business is going to contribute to that or not. I think we could maybe word it vaguely that the business works with the police department on ensuring that truancy is not occurring, and maybe that's something where they are checking the student IDs and that if we are getting complaints about it, that then that's something where the police department, we can't address it. So we could keep it where minors can go there if they're, you know, obviously not in school, and the 16 and 17-year-olds can be there without an adult, that might be a nice way to, you know, change up the wording on this condition.
Thank you. I like the idea of maybe 16-year-olds. Is there anything illegal about us saying, if you're 16 or up, then you can go? I really liked your wording as well, Detective, where you said the applicant agrees to work with the police department to ensure that truancy does not occur. I like that a lot.
I think that's a problem solved if you guys adopt that language.
Commissioner Patterson?
I was just going to agree. I don't, I don't think we need to necessarily respectfully, I don't, I think even minors under 16 could benefit, so that part of it, I wouldn't necessarily say, but just as far as just the saying, working with the police department to address truancy, I'm 100% for that.
Commissioner, any other commissioner comments or anything? Okay, so that's what we would like to see.
All right.
Thank you for figuring that out. So Ms. Partis, will you please take a vote? Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodbody?
Yes.
Commissioner Franco Clausen, absent. Commissioner Patterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Garg, absent. Chair Ollie Sullivan, absent. And Vice Chair Lo.
Aye.
Item number three is the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting on October 26, 2023. Any commissioner comments or questions about this item, or do we have a motion?
I'll motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
May we please have a vote? Commissioner Stevens?
I'm abstaining.
Commissioner Goodbody?
Yes.
Commissioner Franco Clausen, absent. Commissioner Patterson?
Yes, but...
Without, without quorum to vote to approve the minutes, it will need to be continued to the next meeting. We need, we need four votes to approve.
Okay. So we will continue it to the next meeting. Commissioner reports?
Okay, good evening commissioners. I hope everyone had a wonderful and safe Thanksgiving. Hopefully it was relaxing and didn't, I'm still recuperating, I think, from all the turkey I ate. Just wanted to give you a couple of quick announcements. So some of you may have heard that one of our former commissioners, Commissioner Arti Gard, did resign from the Planning Commission and, this week, due to some personal other obligations, and the council is looking to potentially take action to consider an alternative, an alternate to the Planning Commission next Tuesday, December 12th. So we look forward to getting back up to full staffed, staffing with that, but that appointment hopefully will happen soon, and that new commissioner will be able to join the Planning Commission hopefully sometime in January. Also wanted to let everyone know, the next regularly scheduled meeting is next Thursday, so thank everyone for making the special meeting this evening. The agenda for that meeting was posted this afternoon. There are currently two items under consideration. One of them is a recommendation from the Planning Commission to the City Council on the updated climate action plan, the adoption of the environmental justice element of the general plan, as well as updates to the safety element. In addition to that, there's also a multifamily project on Atherton that is going to be for final consideration by the Planning Commission, so both of those items are moving forward and will be on the agenda for next week. Also wanted to let everyone know that we are tentatively planning to schedule the election of officers at the first meeting in January, and that will be an opportunity for the Planning Commission to nominate a chair, vice chair and secretary to serve out the 2024 calendar. So that will be up for consideration in January, and we'll be taking nominations at that point. Without that, that concludes my comments for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any commissioner comments? Okay, hearing none. I just want to thank staff for the great presentations tonight, and thank my fellow commissioners for being willing to come out and have this special meeting, and, and of course, we wouldn't be able to do any of this without Ms. Partis, so thank you very much, and meeting is adjourned.
Thank you for the hot chocolate, Ms. Partis.
Yes, you're welcome.
Recording stopped.